This Mahoning County Commissioners Hearing Room, regular meeting number sixteen, Thursday, April twenty first, slightly after ten, and we will start with the pledge, please. And will our Struthers students lead us in the pledge?
I would like to be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. I like it. We've got a packed house. We are going to start with the Struthers students and Civic Day, and I will read to you the press release, part of the press release that we have here. And it is, "The Board of Mahoning County Commissioners will be celebrating and recognizing National County Government Month during the month of April at their Thursday, April twenty first board meeting. The month's highlights have local leaders work to build healthy, safe, and vibrant communities for the people they serve. Counties are the state partners in delivering critical services such as justice and public safety, infrastructure, child and senior protective services. We want to take this opportunity to recognize efforts of our fellow public servants and staff who work diligently to carry out these essential functions. Mahoning County is very special, and we hope the residents explore the many ways that county serves them and helps to make it a great place to come home, Mahoning County. And today, it is also Civic Day with the Struthers High School students who will be touring the Mahoning County Courthouse, and I believe you probably already did that at nine AM and attending our meeting at ten, and we welcome you to our meeting."
Yes.
Paul Miller and the other elected officials, if they'd like to stand. Mayor and your elected officials who are here, please stand. Thank you all so for coming down to be with us. Introduce yourselves. That's, you're more than welcome to do that. Kat, you want to start them off?
Sure, I can start. I just want to thank you guys for allowing us to come here. Polly Nancy Audrey, thank you guys for setting this up for us. We normally do mock trial. Megan Short House.
Sorry, could you go to the podium that way? We catch you on the camera.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Megan Short House, our clerk of counsel, she normally sets this up, so we do a mock trial. So we wanted to bring the kids here to see, or not mock trial, mock council meeting. We wanted to bring them here just to see how everything operates.
It might be a trial.
And while we're here, we'd also like to thank Commissioner Trafficini and Commissioner Robert Mitty for all of your help and everything that we deal with in the city of Struthers, because every time I call or text or email, they have been so supportive, not just of me and our staff and everybody at City Hall, but just of our entire city. So I just wanted to thank you guys.
Thank you, Kat. You want to introduce your other members or?
Sure, I have Christina Ball.
Third Word Councilman Robert Burnside.
Fourth Word Councilman Rick Bass.
Councilor Large Megan Healy.
First Word Councilman Lori Greenwood.
Councilor Large Dallas Pigly.
Second Word Councilman Ron Garcelli.
Treasurer Mark Brenner.
Safety Service Director Paul Fenton.
And we also have Jim Balick, who could not be with us today, our Law Director John Smollett, our Judge Dom Leone, and then our Rotary President Karen Edwards is also here with us.
Thank you so much for coming, all of you. We really appreciate it. And we're sorry to say that Dave is not with us today. He was out of town on business. So he was really upset that he missed this, but because of the time of the Civic Day and Government Week, we had to have it today. So he will be getting a video of everything we do have here. At this time, we will be also recognizing all of your students that are here. And we will be giving them a resolution and a recognition to being part of Civic Day. So I want to bring your students up so we can acknowledge them all. And we have a certificate for each one of them. And all the students that were elected to office. They were all your students. Who is the mayor? All right, keep that woman power. You go, girls. We'll go down. Do you want to go down with them?
Say some names. Grace Fabry, she's our mayor.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. We're here. Stand right up over here.
Carmen La Rubio, Safety Service Director. Abby Donahue, who's our judge. Zoe Simpson, who's our Director of Law, I think for the second year in a row. Look at him. Ronnie Leonard, who's our President of Council. Ava Polk Pat. Dylan Greenwood. First Word Councilwoman Lori Greenwood. Ava Hall. Word Councilwoman. Your Dean. Gregory Rogers, he is our fourth Word Councilman. Wood. His dad is one of our fire engineers.
Thank you.
Emma Morris. Ailin McGrath.
How great was that? How did you like serving for a day in government? Did you enjoy that? Did you? Carry this with you. Someday you could be us. Get your education and stay involved with the mayor and your council members, your school district. Be a participant in great functions that you have. You'll go far. So congratulations to you. Thank you for coming to our beautiful court house. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I just want to say what, you know, echo what Carol said, and you know, participatory government is why we're free. Free system here. Anybody can run for office, and you all have young minds, impressive minds. Use your brains. Okay, you all look like you're smart and go to a good school system, great family, great students, and we just want to wish you all the best and welcome you here anytime that you would like. We'd like to thank the mayor too, and for everybody who put on this beautiful day.
And enjoy this beautiful courthouse. If you've been, did you go through the whole building? I mean, this is the most historic, beautiful building in the state of Ohio. You have to know, and I must say that we are on, thanks to Jim Fortnato and our team that put the renovations to the courthouse of eighty-eight counties. We have made the back of the CCAO folder.
Jim.
Thanks to all of you.
Well, it's, we worked together and we got it done. I mean, beautiful. So enjoy your day. I see you're going to be going to lunch.
Yes.
Donna Vinos, enjoy that. Have a great day and stay safe. Stay in school. Get your education. Main things. Take care. Thank you.
I think you guys still behind commissioners and commissioners and that. And each of the elected officials. We'll take a group picture.
Commissioners sit in your seats. Mayor can sit in my seat.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. This is video evidence. Who's President of Council?
He's not here. He's not here.
Either one of you guys can sit in there. Somebody else. Yeah. So everybody's behind the desk. Yeah, these three guys on the end. The only one I remember.
God, where do we look?
Yeah, I know.
Beautiful. Okay, all eyes on Frank.
All right, Mr. Marr.
Okay, Mr. Trafficaddy. One more time. Got it. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Enjoy your day. All right. Right now, our first, our first portion of business for our Commissioners' meeting. We will be taking public comments. Three minutes. Come up to the. Do you want to come up to the dais? State your name and address for the record.
I know.
He knows. Name and address for the record.
I'm Richard Star Sala, sixty-seven forty-four, Alpharet Circle, Borbon, Ohio. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Trustees for the William Holmes McGuffey Historical Society. We're the people in nineteen ninety-eight who gave the historic McGuffey property to Mill Creek Parks along with a donation of fifteen thousand dollars for its perpetual care and maintenance. Unfortunately, our many discussions and emails with the park have not resolved a longstanding issue. If you look at your packet, especially page two, you will see that the dock has been allowed to deteriorate. It's at a forty-five degree angle, three feet in the air. The pond is rapidly disappearing. The photos were taken on April twenty, when it's been raining every day, so there's actually a little bit of water in the pond. Normally, the pond is a series of puddles and silt dumps. So this is the historic McGuffey family pond, and the property is a national historic landmark. So it's not a random farm pond. It is a pond directly associated with one of the greatest American educators of all time. And for you younger folks, McGuffey wrote to the famous McGuffey eclectic reader, eighteen thirty-six, ever gone out of print and has educated generations and generations of Americans how to read and write. So the reason why we're here, unfortunately, the Mill Creek Park Board of Commissioners are not accountable to the public. They are unwilling, unable to give us any reasons why the pond and the dock have been allowed to deteriorate. They are appointed by a probate judge, and they're using a countywide tax levy to fund their initiatives. And apparently, from their actions, the photos speak volumes. They are disinvesting in select parts of the county. Coatesville Township is lightly populated, not as affluent as Porbon, California, or Poland. And the Park District has been aggressively writing grants and purchasing property countywide to add additional facilities. Unfortunately, they are not maintaining the facilities they already have. The pond is not that large, would not be that expensive to restore. What we're asking the Commissioners to do, you're one of our last chances of getting any type of justice to this property. It's a quality of life issue. We're asking the Commissioners today to pass a resolution urging the Mill Creek Park Board of Commissioners to restore, maintain, and preserve the McGuffey family pond and dock. And I too have a compliment. When I contacted your office, Ms. Mazalino in particular couldn't be friendlier or professional and prompt. What a breath of fresh air, because when you are a citizen advocate, you get treated very poorly in Mahoning County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Three minutes. State your name and your address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here this morning to call attention.
Your name and address.
To the pond on the McGuffey Wildlife Preserve, which truly in this horrible way.
State your name and address for the record.
I'm going to tell you all a secret. It's not a secret, except this is just, I bought new hearing aids yesterday. They just gave away. It was a new kind. It recharges. I can't hear a thing.
Wait a minute.
We can hear you.
We can hear you. State your name and address for the record.
I have to tell you my name and everything. My name is Shirley Eckley, and I am President of the William Holmes McGuffey Historical Society, and that's why we're here this morning. And I want to call attention, as Richard said, to that pond that is on the McGuffey Wildlife Preserve, and it is in deplorable, it's sad. Deplorable condition. It could be beautiful and a great attended, beautiful to be there. And this land was donated, as he might have said, to the Metro Park System twenty-four years ago. And in those twenty-four years, the park has done nothing to the pond. It's just deteriorated. And this site is now a national historic landmark. Now, what this means is that the site possesses exceptional value commemorating or illustrating the history of the United States. Now, in this case, that is William Holmes McGuffey, the author of the McGuffey Readers. These are the books that taught America to read for over a century. They are still being printed, and they are still used in this country today. That is why that I am here as a descendant of the McGuffey family, and I am a retired educator who loved history. And as I said, I'm President of the Historical Society. I am asking for this commission to pass a resolution urging, urging the Mill Creek Parks to restore, to maintain, and to preserve the McGuffey Pond. It too is part of our American history.
Minutes for the record. State your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Diane Morris, M-O-R-S-E, Nema. And I'm a member of the William Holmes McGuffey Society and a lifelong resident of Coatesville Township, which I'm very proud of Coatesville. My mother was Dorothy Morris, and she was the past President of the National Federation of William Holmes McGuffey at Miami University. And she was the founder of Coatesville Historical Society over twenty-seven years span. We all, together with the Coatesville Bicentennial Committee, were instrumental in paying off the mortgage on the real estate property for the McGuffey home site, which we were very proud to do. We did many fundraisings like flea markets, parades, and selling the McGuffey Reader update and reprints. This home site, as Shirley had said, is on the National Historical Landmark Registry, and the family settled there in eighteen hundred, early eighteen hundred. So I grew up in Coatesville and still reside on the same property. I talk with my mother's sister, who's ninety years old, and she lives in New Canaan, Connecticut, and she says, if this property were in Connecticut, that this would be a national treasure, and it, you know, it's right in our backyard, and you kind of take it for granted, how sad. And then this could make national news if it was in Connecticut. And it's sad to see that the home site pond in such a deplorable condition and the dock that was overturned and can't be used. My mother had a favorite hymn. It was called "In the Garden," and, well, that garden is not looking so good today. That is, there is a real safety concern for the, me being retired, recently retired RN, I feel that a child could easily attempt walking in that area and falling, and recently, there was a person that did fall there, and no major injury was sustained, but she did have some other injury. How ironic that would be if someone were injured on the McGuffey home site property. People that were beloved educators of this country. It's been twenty-four years since the property was donated, and as a concerned citizen and a taxpayer, it is our mission to secure a better place in twenty twenty-two and beyond to the next generations for our children so that they can enjoy that park. We need to be proactive and not just reactive, because there could be potential litigation besides injury. And this could involve Coatesville and who knows the county. So I implore the county commissioners to please help and express our concerns to Metro Parks to preserve, restore, and maintain that home site of seventy-three plus acres, along with, we had also donated fifteen thousand dollars at the time that it was donated. And we anticipate a decent and safe place for our public children to explore. So the pond needs dredged and the dock needs reset or improved. And without these things being done, it would actually look like there's discrimination. I hate to use that, because people use it so much, but this is a little lower. The salaries are a little lower in that area, and we have a highly mixed racial population. Do you have any comments?
Thank you. Anyone else? We want to thank you for coming, Richard, in the group from the park. Judge Russo, I did call him and discuss this. I also tried to get ahold of Aaron Young prior to when we had our conversation, Richard, and I really didn't get a response. So I'm looking at this, and I also wondered, you gave them fifteen thousand dollars?
We had an oral agreement that the money should be set aside and invested for perpetual care and maintenance.
And was that money?
They would not set the money aside. They just want to have it spent.
On this project?
Yeah.
They spent it here.
They depend the money on the preserve, but they give no reason why the pond and dock have never been part of the strategic plan, why they refuse to write a grant to restore it. I even suggested they ask the Commissioners for COVID money, Biden money, and they declined to do that. What is happening, people in Coatesville, the east side in Camel, have to get in their car, drive to a different part of the county to find a Mill Creek Park facility that has a functioning pond and dock. That is not right. That's not equal. And you are our last chance. We've talked to the judge. We've gone to numerous Mill Creek Park meetings. We've tried to talk to Aaron Young. We've had many emails. There is no accountability. Hopefully, you folks could act as a conscience on behalf of all Mahoning County taxpayers.
Well, we, as a board, we will send a letter to the park and state that, and we'll also send a copy of this. Well, they don't have it from us. I'm not saying that's going to work, but we'll do it. Anthony?
I agree with Carol, and I have a question. Was this initially or originally under the auspices of Mill Creek Park ever?
William Holmes McGuffey Historical Society owned it for many years, and we gave it to Mill Creek Park in nineteen ninety-eight. They now own it.
That's what I wanted to know.
They own it.
And how long has this been in disarray, Richard?
Twenty-four years. Every year, they would keep telling me, maybe next year, Richard, maybe next year, Richard, maybe next year. Well, twenty-four years. We're all getting old. We're going to be dead before they do anything. So that is why we're bringing it up to you. We really are thankful for a letter. I think a resolution would be more powerful, but you know, that's your decision.
We support you on this. I support you on this. This is something that they should have taken care of. Doesn't look that complicated?
Well, I can tell you this, people on the east side in Camel and Coatesville are very unhappy. In fact, you know what they did yesterday? Instead of improving the dock, they removed it. They got rid of the evidence.
They took the dock out.
Removed the dock yesterday.
Who removed it?
Mill Creek Park removed the dock instead of improving it. And coincidentally, last night, we were at the Coatesville Township Trustee Meeting, so they removed the evidence the day of the Coatesville Township Trustee Meeting. It's one of those Mahoning County coincidences that we hear so much about.
You know, usually there's dialogue that they'll say, hey, you know what? Can we please sit down with you as a board? And explain this, and then let's work something out. I can't believe that is not even happening.
I can do.
I'm very disappointed in hearing.
Send you all the emails with their staff and Aaron Young, and if you read the vindicator. At the last Mill Creek Park Board Meeting, the Board President, Lee Frye, when asked why this pond and dock have been abandoned, he said, if my people bring me a recommendation, we could make it work. But his staff, apparently, have made some type of judicious decision that they're going to disinvest in Coatesville, lightly populated, less affluent, but I. But I can tell you this much, this probably wouldn't be happening at a facility in Bourbon, Campbell, Polon, or Austin County. So you're our last chance. They are unelected officials using a countywide tax levies. They are accountable to no, so you're the voice of conscience. You're our last hope.
All right, we will.
I'd like to say something, if I may.
And then we have to move on.
If any of you have heard any of the stories after you read them, like.
And we have to move.
A lot of his, he picked from, to put in, mentioned that the way we have beautiful pastures and places and things that are beautiful that we had. This is gonna be disaster, nothing. They have beautiful trails out there that you can walk on. It's gorgeous. And here's this pond. I fell in it, not the pond, but I fell down, and it's all bramble around it, and I, that still hurts. It doesn't, if they would clear that off and just, it would be so beautiful. And that's what we want, history. We want this for the children as they grow up to see. This is what it was like years ago.
Well, we appreciate you coming, Richard, with everyone and giving us your, this is, this pictures are a thousand words. So we will also put this with whatever we do with the judge and the board, and we'll keep you posted.
Oh, we will.
Thank you.
Be sure.
Anyone else with public comments before we move on? Yes.
Terry Historical, Louisville, Ohio. Last week, when, when Paul Gaines settled out of court for five hundred mil, five hundred thousand dollars, because he said he was innocent. Well, Paul, if you were innocent, you should have went to trial and bring out Marty Desmond's accusations, saying that you're, that Marty was lying. So when you settle out of court, you're saying a lot about your, about your personality that you are guilty. Even, you settled the day before you were going to the FBI to do a disposit, uh, do a, an interview with them. And that's my thing on Paul. And with Mill, with Mill Creek, do a full court press, getting everyone from Coatesville, Struthers, Camel, down to those meetings. We did it on West Side to stop, stop the West Side being torn down, the library. We did it with a few people, five people. We, we stopped the.
Me and you.
People's, we, I was part of the anti-mu, war movement when the young son Bush went up, went up supposedly with mass weapons of destruction. We knew there was no, none. And even with Ukraine now, we got to get up and put pressure on the NATO nation leader to get in there and stop this evil bastard that's destroying democracy.
All right, at this time, we're gonna have to close it off, because we have meetings after this. Approval of previous minutes, board meeting number fifteen, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and approval of bills for payment. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Number one advertisement for bids, lead. Phil?
Sorry about that, I was muted. F is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for lead house control work at nine twenty Maryland, amount of nineteen thousand oh five, is that, am I in the right spot? Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is a chip, uh, community housing impacted preservation program, uh, lead house controlled, uh, combination work at seven sixty Quartzville Road, Camel, Ohio, for rehab.
Okay, thank you. Advertisements for bids and number one, do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Yes. Number one, journal entries, do I hear a motion?
Was from journal entry number one?
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Yes. All right, number two is agreements. A, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Linda?
Good morning. Uh, letter A is an agreement with I Synergy out of Campfield, Ohio, for ongoing support, maintenance, updates, hosting of our website, youngsteronline.com. An annual, uh, ongoing agreement in the amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand five hundred.
All right, thank you. B, engineers.
Morning, commissioners. It's an agreement with Commercial Truck and Trailer for repairs for our vehicle, number the estimated amount of seven hundred forty-two or ninety-two cents.
Thank you. C has met?
Good morning, commissioners. This is an agreement with Fallsway Incorporated to equip the twenty twenty-two Ford F-250 we got on the grant from Homeland Security. This would make the truck NFPA compliant for the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-three cents, non-general.
Thank you. D and E, Jobs and Family Services, Audrey?
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Nancy, Audrey. Uh, letter, letter D is an agreement with Job and Family Service Agreement with Affordable Language Services, LTD, for language translation services per unit pricing for two years, non-general. Letter E, Job and Family Services Subgrant Agreement with MYCAT for Home and Administrative Services in the amount of six hundred sixty thousand dollars, non-general.
Thank you. F, lead?
Now, we're in the right spot. This is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for lead house control, Healthy Homes Work at nine twenty Maryland, in the amount of nineteen thousand and fifty dollars, non-general.
Okay, thank you. And G, recycling, Lou?
Good morning, commissioners. Item G is going to be the acquisition of a forklift to be utilized at the, uh, permanent collection facility on Bev Road to help facilitate the collection of those heavy items we're gonna be doing on a permanent basis now.
Thank you. Number two agreements, A through G, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, uh, number two agreements.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Yes. Number three, change orders, A and B, lead?
A is a, uh, change order for a project that was done at ninety-two Creed Street under the CHIP grant program for twelve hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. That encompasses change order number one and number two. B is a change order with Gary Krim, Inc., for chip home repair work at three seventy-seven Pollin, the amount of one hundred and fifteen dollars, all non-general.
Thank you. Number three, change orders, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, change orders.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Yes. Number four, road closings, A, engineers.
This is a request to close Turner Road near the Kirk Road intersection from May second to the twenty-seventh for continuation of the term bike bridge work. That's a request of the rule.
Thank you. Number four, road closings, A, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, road closings for A.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Yes. Number one, resolutions additions, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, resolutions, number one additions.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Number two, recorded bids, A and B, engineers?
A is a, it's for the middle of town road, coal replacement. And B is for Mahoning CR twelve VAR. It's a pavement planning asphalt overlay for fifteen point four seven miles of road.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Number two, recorded bids, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, recorded bids, A and B.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Yes. Number three, resolution of awards, A and B, Rick?
Yes. A is to award the South Avenue Resurfacing Phase One to Shelly and Sands in the amount of one million, forty-four thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars, thirty-five cents on general. Low bid, eighty percent, go dot, and eighteen point one percent of PWC funded. B is to award the South Avenue Resurfacing Project Phase Two to Lindy Paving in the amount of one million, four hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars, non-general, low bid, eighty percent, go dot.
Thank you. Number three, resolution of awards, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, resolution awards, A and B.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Yes. Number four, resolutions, A, commissioners, O and B, non- general.
Commissioners, this is a resolution supporting the Weathersfield Township application for federal fund program by East Gate Regional Council of Government and commit a local chair not to seek twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-seven dollars for the county line road improvement project to the campus of care.
B, dock ward, Diane?
Good morning, commissioners, Audrey, Nancy. Uh, this is a resolution approving the extension of a probationary period for an additional ninety days for an existing claim.
Okay, and C, engineers?
Yes, this is a resolution to reach out on that bid, you see, on Wednesday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, for the Mahoning CR twelve VAR project and authorizing the purchasing director to rehab.
Okay, thank you. And D through G, Jobs and Family Services, Audrey?
Good morning again, commissioners, Nancy, Audrey. Letter D, Job and Family Services Resolution, approving the appointment of one full-time income maintenance aide to. E, Job and Family Service Resolution, approving the appointment of one full-time computer system support specialist. F, Job and Family Service Resolution, approving the promotional appointment for one full-time computer system support specialist. G, Job and Family Service Resolution, approving the unpaid leave of absence for one employee beginning April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Audrey. All right, H, I, and J, lead?
There's a resolution, uh, moral obligation that was in excess of ten percent of the original contract for some roof sheeting that needed replaced at one thirty-eight McLaur in our Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program grant work that was done there. I is also a moral obligation, uh, that was a changeover from a furnace, uh, clean and tune up that resulted in a replacement and thus some, uh, other plumbing issues that were taken care of, uh, peripherally there at three seventy-seven Pollin Avenue. And J is a resolution, um, for approving the partnership agreement between the cities of Camel, uh, Struthers, and Mahoning County to apply for the ODSA, uh, CHIP grant, uh, for FY twenty twenty-two, uh, allows us to, uh, apply for an increased amount as a partnership, uh, and will be applying for a million dollars, uh, for the next CHIP, uh, round of, uh, community housing impact and preservation program grant funding, uh, that will be awarded, uh, towards the end of, uh, twenty twenty-two, going forward for twenty-four months.
Thank you very much. Okay, O and B grants, Anna, is she?
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, this is a resolution to make April, uh, to authorize the support of the Fair Housing laws. And what Fair Housing does is it allows, it protects people when they go to purchase or rent housing, that they cannot be discriminated against based on sex, race, color, religion, national origin, disability, sexual orientation, age, marital status, or ancestry of birth within, anywhere in the United States.
Thank you.
There are some pens and paper and the complaint processes up there on the front table. If anybody would like to take that with them.
All right, thank you. L, sanitary?
Good morning, everyone. This is a resolution authorizing the disposal of scrap with value less than twenty-five hundred dollars per Ohio Revised Code three oh seven point one two B one.
Okay, thank you. And M, Sheriff's Department?
This is a resolution accepting the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, rain control grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, the Division of Watercraft, in the amount of forty-four thousand, five seventy-seven, twelve.
Thank you. Number four, resolutions, A through M, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, resolutions, A, yeah.
Second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Yes. Uh, that concludes our business portion of the meeting. And, um, we are running a little late for our next, our next meeting. So Anthony, uh, if you'd like to say something?
Just real quick, thank Mayor and City of Struthers for National County Government Day, and we're pleased to have all of the students here. Hope you learned something.
I echo what Commissioner Jaffe Canty said. And, um, you had an active meeting here today, and you learned how government works. So I'm glad you're here. Keep it up, Kat, Mayor Miller, and to all your council and president of council and everyone that's here from Struthers. Have a wonderful lunch and enjoy yourselves. Stay connected. We're always willing to have you come aboard. Maybe someday you can be one of our interns. Kat will get all that information for you, uh, if you're within that age range, I think they can, they can be a part of an internship. All right, thank you very much for coming. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So, uh, second roll call.
Commissioner Jaffe Canty?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Begety?
Yes. Next meeting will be Thursday, April twenty-eighth, at ten a.m. Thank you, same place.